Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Maryland Council meeting for Monday, July 24, 2023. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have Agenda Item 1A, which is the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Councilmember Horace.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the Agenda Item 1A passed unanimously with all councilmembers present. Up next is Agenda Item Number 2, which is a presentation by Worcester Youth and Family Counseling Services. It's our annual report. We have our Executive Director, Jennifer LaGore, and Youth Family, Youth Programs Facilitator, Leslie Dixon. So, thank you both for joining us. We apologize for the delay.
Well, it's all of a sudden like the, there you go. Okay. Hi, thank you. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Jennifer LaGore, the Executive Director. This is Leslie Dixon, our programs facilitator. We're really excited to give our report for fiscal year 23. I think after the last meeting, we need a breath of fresh air. And I think everybody can agree that this is money well spent.
Take it away.
I'm sorry. It is. It's money. We're so grateful. See if I can advance this thing. Okay. So, last year, a big part of youth programs, and what I love, is our summer camp for residents in the town of Berlin. Students who are age six through 12 participate, pardon, excuse me, participate in this free summer camp. And we cater to students who would not otherwise have the opportunity and provide them with lots of different enrichment activities. Our summer camps run for eight weeks, and last year, we served 22 students. Each week has a different theme, like art, STEM, fitness, games, nature, animals, and then a wrap-up week. And we have different artists come in, different speakers, different organizations that are local, to help provide different activities during each week. And that can be really fun for the kids. They really enjoy it. The space that we use is still at Buckingham Presbyterian Church. It's a really big space. It houses all of the students. We started that because of COVID, and we needed to socially distance, and it's just been a wonderful area. They're very gracious to us. And for example, we've had speakers from Coastal Bayes come in, and Ford Reactor, Health Department, Azteek State Park, Coast Kids. And one of the really nice things that I see, and I'm sure Leslie can speak to that a little bit too, is that despite living in this county, many students have a fear of the water, and they've never been to the beach. They don't know how to swim. So, we're sure to include different experiences and different activities that teach them about the water and get them comfortable with swimming and doing things in our territory. So, I think that's really neat and really rewarding. One of the things that I'm personally proud of is that we are Maryland Department of Health certified. That's a lot of paperwork and a lot of rule-following, but you know, if you send a kid to us, we are following all of the rules, from emergency procedures to health plans to child abuse prevention, all of that. We are brought by the state of Maryland. And there are various field trips that we take with this camp as well. Altitude Trampoline Park, Mount Jacks, Jolly Rogers. The Berlin Police Department partners with us on that. And I don't see Chief Hunter, but they go with us to that. Shorebirds, aquarium, movie theater, you name it. We try to do at least one field trip a week. So, here's a little bit with Art Week. TC Studios is really fun. It's a husband-and-wife team. The husband is the DJ, the wife is the artist, and the kids are dancing and singing and painting the entire time. And they make really beautiful creations. So, Art Week, I don't know if there's anything else to add to Art Week, but I think the kids really enjoy whatever activity is throughout the week.
And they're just very friendly. The kids can come up, they can be around the DJ booth, they can spin spin tables, there's a back area. They just make this feel at home. You go there, and when they come to us, it's the same thing.
Fitness Week is always fun. We have a CrossFitter come in, Coach Frank, every year, and he teaches the kids all different exercises and teaches them all about fitness and health and lifestyle, and the rest of the lessons that we also dovetail into fitness. But look at these kids. Who would have ever thought? I mean, there's some serious dominoes there. STEM Week is really great. And Ford Reactor, we have the Science Guy coming this year. A lot of kids are familiar with the Science Guy. And tell about some of the things that they make in STEM, robots.
Yes. So, they make robots, they build structures. The little boy in the bottom, he's actually eating homemade ice cream that we made.
Joel.
Yes, Joel. And they built a structure off to the side that they had to be able to put water on top and had to stay up there. So, they had a lot of fun with that, a lot of time, and they had to plan it. The other picture, I think they're making bracelets from the Health Department, the Minority Outreach Club. And we just build all types of things, just do a lot of different experiments.
Game Week, that looks like a really big game week last year. I was looking at those pictures, and I said, wow, what did they do? So, not only do they play games at, you know, the church and things, but there were field trips at Shorebirds, Loom Park, even Spider-Man was there. That's pretty cool.
And they have Fire Birds and Shangri-La, Krisco.
And you'd be amazed how a lot of the kids really like old-fashioned games. You know, let's play a good old-fashioned game of checkers or chess, or, you know, just things like that. So simple.
I love it. They love it.
Good.
Yeah, they love it.
Love the one-on-one. No video games this, that week. And Water Week, that's a great time to cool off. If the kids are at the church, they're doing water balloon fights and water balloon races and all kinds of things out in the parking lot. This year, I know they took a lot of field trips, but last year, there were some field trips mixed in as well, Maui Jacks and Jolly Rogers included. Nature Week is another week. There was a trip to the Wildfowl Art Museum, a visit to the Azteek shoreline, which again, a lot of the students are learning more and more about the water and not to fear it and all the creatures and things that go along with that. You don't have to be scared of them. And they're touching them, you know, the fossils and all kinds of things, and learning about clams and, you know, horseshoe crab and all the things that seem so far into some of these kids sometimes. So, Nature Week was very much about water waves and how we're part of, you know, the watershed. Animal Week is a fun week as well. I also participated and was a chaperone to the Baltimore Aquarium, which is a very dark place. And keeping track of all of the kids, that was fun. They were very well behaved. And during the week, what kinds of animal adventures did they have? What did you, I think we had coast kids come in too.
Yeah, we had coast kids come in, and they did a scavenger hunt, like to the park. They brought just, I think it was a clam show, and then we got into the clam show.
Right, they got to see what it's all about, like live and in person.
Bring all types of different animals. We go with horses or deer, just kind of ease them into it, and at the end of the day, all the different animals, they're like, I want to come back. But the Baltimore Aquarium was very fun. They had a lot of fun on the little stage there that you see. We went to Patterson Park afterwards, and we kind of looked at the different things they had, and I think that's a cannon that the kids are playing with. There's a waterfall.
So, things that they normally wouldn't experience. Yeah, we traveled out to Baltimore for it, and they loved it.
A lot of them have never been.
No.
Or even went to Baltimore for it, too.
And so, the last week is always a wrap-up week, and you can probably speak more about that, everyone saying their goodbyes and getting ready for school.
You know, we just say our goodbyes, we hand out the school supplies, any projects that they left off. We normally do like an end-of-the-year project where they color something, or we might do a time capsule, and I keep them, I have the time capsule from like three years ago, and I still just hold on to them. So, we do like a wrap-up thing, and just reflect on anything we did, take their ideas, what we want to do next year, become, that's the thing. There you go.
And you have the COVID-19 time capsules, too, right?
I do.
Yeah. So, in addition to providing the free summer camp, we also participate in town events throughout the year. Spring Celebration, National Night Out, Peach Festival, see the list, Oktoberfest, different track of treats. And we provide a really nice holiday dinner and gifts for the Berlin Youth Club participants, as well as some of our other participants and programs at Worcester Youth. These pictures were so cute, Leslie. The Peach Festival, four youth from the Berlin Youth Club volunteered to help provide games and crafts, so that was nice. They were giving back.
And they did everything. I didn't have to do anything. They jumped right in, they brought the kids over, they played with them, they just kind of came to me, ready to go, happy to do. So, I think that's a good thing.
In December, we were part of the Christmas parade, which was really fun. Everyone, all the little ones dressed up as crabs and sunglasses, and it was an Eastern short name, as you know, and we were very peachy with that one. So, we did that, and yeah, they had a blast. That's you and your mom holding the sign in the front of the group. Then the Toys for Tots donations and other community donations, we were able to put bags together of goodies and things for the families around the holidays, as well as a nice packaged meal. If they wanted to come to the office and stay and sit with us, we had holiday movies going, and they could eat there, or they could take it to go, just depending on preference. We started that with COVID, just thinking that some people might be more inclined to want to take things home now, but we had quite a few people stay and chat and eat with us, and we wrapped a lot of meals to go as well. So, it's a nice option for people. And yes, Spring Celebration, we always tend to hand out some type of craft or goodie or bag to the kids in the town. And we started the Bus Stop Snack Shack again, which is where, in various parts of the county, when buses are scheduled to drop students off in a certain area, we'll have a little stand set up with goodies and things that they can take home and eat for the weekend. We try to do it at the end of the week, so they have some food for the weekend, and they love it. And then the school supply drive, the Jeep Club, they just, this year, they just dropped off a ton of things. I feel like we're talking about last year, we're already into this year. It's amazing. But they, yeah, they treat us very, very well, and we find a lot of really good school supplies for the kids.
And they actually came last year and helped the kids pack their bags with them. So, they were walking around and just asking what they needed, so it was very helpful last year.
And thank you so much for your support. I know we do a lot of meaningful things for the community, and I was able to help out on day one this year with the summer camp, and there was a lot of participants from last year, and it's a really nice group of kids. I was pleasantly surprised at how polite and grateful they really were. And just really, no matter, there's a lot of diversity, and no matter what background, where they came from, or what age, because, you know, six to 12, that's a fifty range, they were all getting along, at least, you know, in the beginning. And I'm hearing that they still are. So, it's a really, really nice group. There's probably, what, 26 kids this year?
Yes, we have 26 kids, we have two youth club kids, we have four, we can't count the others. There is a lot of people.
There's a lot of, yes.
So, what do you, and when is your last, what week are you on right now?
We are on the fourth week, and we end on the 24th August.
So, do you, at this stage, I know Summer Academy is ending this Thursday. Do you guys take new students this late in the game, or no?
I think you asked that same question last year.
I do remember somebody asking that last year. Typically, what we do is they'll sign up way early, like March or anything, and they let me know that their kid is in summer school. And then what I'll do is I'll hold their spot, or I'll be to somebody else who's the brand there of the time that they'll be in Summer Academy, and then they just swap out.
So, this is the last thing I'm gonna say, because I know we've kept you here all night, and we appreciate you staying. With looking at school year 24, and there being no after-school or Summer Academy, are you guys in a position where you may be able to expand your numbers? Because there may be a lot more friends who don't have, yeah.
So, I think that the Town of Berlin funds a large portion of the youth program, so I think the thank you is the opposite. We thank you for your service, what you provided to the community. We help with the financial side of things, but we all do the heavy lifting, and we really do appreciate the service that you provide. So, I think that that may, that's all for you.
Just something for you to think about.
Yeah, absolutely. If we can, we will. I think the after-school program would be really, a really neat thing to have.
So, I just wanted to say, I love seeing this report every year. I don't know, but I think your groups are slowly getting larger.
Yes, Sitzco.
Sitzco.
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's great, and I want to thank you. And also, just a shameless plug here, the Peach Festival is next Saturday. So, are you, I don't know, you may be helping us out again, helping the museum, I don't know. But it's next Saturday, so everybody come on down.
We usually have that up.
Get your peaches.
As far as I know, we haven't heard anything, so I guess I would say, how's doing coming out?
Have somebody reach out at the last minute, or they should reach out and say, hey, can you get some candy?
Okay, well, it's out there. The Peach Festival is next Saturday.
Is that what you're saying?
Oh, you know, I mean, it's out there, and the board can hear me, I'm sure.
So, anyway, but I just wanted to say thank you, and that's great, and the Peach Festival is next Saturday.
You come in, you come here and share the programs, and that is greatly appreciated. But what I hear from your participants, how much they enjoy your program, that really makes me feel good for the Town of Berlin being a part of what's going on in your program. It's a wonderful thing. I know Joel, I know Joel's sister, and Joel speaks highly of the activity.
I'll just chime in, too.
Thank you for that.
I have to know some of the participants as well, and, you know, my wife joined your board, so getting to learn a lot more about Worcester Youth. But I think really, well, I'm so proud that Town of Berlin supports this effort. You know, 26 kids, and you mentioned that some of them have never been to, you know, their pool or the ocean. I mean, that's really, I can't think of any better use of public funds to provide this opportunity. So, thank you for that, it's a great partnership.
So, in terms of how residents can help you with financial support, can you send out an annual letter for this summer program, or how do you?
We have the annual appeal from the whole organization, and can utilize funds how we need to, based on that, but nothing specific to this one particular program. There are some other grant sources that could be tapped into to keep expanding it, which we have utilized in the past. Then again, with COVID, everything just really, we did the virtual camp in 2020, so it slowed things down tremendously, but I can see it having the potential to continue growing, you know, from here on out.
But if residents didn't want to help you financially, they just mailed a check?
You could, absolutely, and just designate it to the Berlin Youth Club, and we'll make sure that it goes directly, yep, to all these exciting things. Yep. We do give meals as well, breakfast, lunch, and snacks, so we provide that for free as well. So, it can go to things like that, too.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is Agenda Item 3A, and that's a special event permit application we have for Mullen Hill's 20th Anniversary Block Party celebration on Saturday, September 16, 2023, from 3:30 PM to 7:30 PM. We have Lauren Williams and Ellen Rowe. Ellen?
She was on.
It's okay.
Lauren, I like your haircut.
Thank you. It's getting shorter and shorter.
So, Lauren, just tell us a little bit about the event, and I don't think there should be any trouble getting this approved.
Yeah, so, so this year, we had a group of, we had some more development in Mullen Hill, we've got some new homes that have come up, and new neighbors, and a lot of neighbors that have young kids, same age as my kids, and so really, we can feel, you know, the growth and the excitement in the neighborhood, and we wanted to come up with an idea to celebrate and happen to notice that our HOA was established 20 years ago, so we thought, hey, let's call it a 20th Anniversary Block Party. And so, very casual, just the residents and their families, and we'll invite, I think, decided on previous property owners as well. So, it'll be a really small, you know, affair, but with the number of young kids, we wanted, you know, to have the street closed, and in completing the special event permit, we saw extra trash cans as an option as well, so we're not asking for very much, but that's the vision for the special event.
Jimmy, do you think there'll be any trouble with trash cans for that?
Yeah, we can provide, say, six cans throughout the area, some coven to bury.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. I just have a question. I mean, I have no problem, I think this is a great idea, but I would just ask a, if you're walking off that street, can you, can you please just, I guess, I don't know how you want to work it, just make sure in case there's an incident, EMS, or God forbid, fire, have to get in, because that's the only one.
Yes.
Make sure they're able to get access.
Okay.
Hopefully, you know, that's my intention.
Absolutely. We're just gonna use codes, right? Not the little?
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the special event application, if there's other questions.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Horace. You two want rock, paper, scissors?
He can have it.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. Thank you, Lauren. Sorry for the delay.
Thank you very much.
And Jimmy, Lauren, do you have Jimmy Charles's contact information? If not, the two of you maybe need to get in touch, just so that you can coordinate the trash cans. Up next is, I'll be sure. It's okay. So, up next is Agenda Item 3B, which is a special event permit application empowering children, presented by Enlightening Women's Event at Henry Park on Sunday, October 15, 2023, from 12 o'clock PM to 4 o'clock PM. And we have LaNisha? LaNisha? LaNika, thank you. LaNika here with us this evening. Doug, come on forward. So, just tell us a little bit about the event, and I think yours should be pretty short and sweet as well.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Thank you. We apologize for the delay.
It's okay. Okay, well, I'm a women's empowerment nonprofit for like, my, my, they take on a women's empowerment is more than just women come together and empower each other, bring each other out, but we also specialize in helping out like resources that have on a job change, career change, everything is free. I have each, at least try to have at least two times a year, and it's always been held at the Royal Library, you know, all our events, but we do help the people like, like I said, career change and, you know, raise resources. I am, I was a single parent for a while, and what happened was, coming up, I didn't really have access to a lot of resources and, you know, things, and I think support and this stuff, and so, by going through that, after my cancer scare last year, I decided to develop this group. I felt like Laura put that calling on my heart, so I just went out, decided to go ahead, and so far, everything's been going good. But I also like to do family moment. I take care, I have a autistic grandson, and a lot of people sometimes, personally, we go to stores and things, and my youngest son is also ADHD, so we go to stores. So, my, my purpose is try to get out there in the public and educate people also about different disabilities and things, and so, like I said, every, every event is free, it's always free, just open to the public, whether from all backgrounds, no matter if they're married, single, you know, or races, and I just wanted to finally give back, so much has been given to me, you know, throughout my whole, you know, struggles, and like I said, because of cancer scare I had last year, that's what made me go down this organization.
Well, thank you for the work that you did, really, and thanks for sharing that with us.
Tell me about the seven to 10 vendors.
Okay, so, like I said, my, my definition of women's empowerment is connecting people with different services and for the change, so each event that I had, I had like, for example, a woman that worked with me that came out, on my South John Market came out. So, to give to these vendors needing like free resources, giveaways and things, to like help educate people, or, you know, free awareness and, you know, help connect, so.
So, these, these would be vendors that would be sharing their services?
Yes.
And how to, and how to obtain those services?
Yes, I do.
You're not talking vendors that will be selling stuff?
No. All of my, all of my events are free, and like I said, we just wanted to give back and, you know, like, help others, so they won't have to suffer. I went through a lot, you know, coming up, and like I said, it's been like those marriages that helped me a long way, but a lot of things that happened, I didn't know about not until like after the fact. And so, my, my, my purpose is to help bring awareness, even we had like different community events and things, but like a lot of people don't know about a lot of other things. Like I said, now, for different disability, I have a daughter, she has MS. I did find a lot of resources by that, so when I say I've been through it, I've been through it, taking care of, preparing, bringing home, but like I said, because of the generous people that's, you know, sold into my life, I just feel like that's my way of, you know, giving back and helping.
Thank you. We have, you've done very well. We've got a motion by Vice President, I thank Councilmember Horace, beat you to the second.
I don't know if I can do that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that your event passes unanimously. Touch base with Sarah before you leave, just to make sure we have her number. I serve on the tri-county council board, so if you need any help with connecting with the job market and things like that, I'll be happy to help. So, thank you, you're good.
I know they like to come, tri-county council for?
Yeah, we'll get you squared away. Just see Sarah at the end, and you're good to go.
Thank you.
Great job.
Well said.
Up next is Agenda Item 3C, which is motion 2023-23 to waive business license fees for town hired contractors, and our Town Administrator, Mary Ball, is gonna run point.
This is a follow-up to the ordinance that was sent a couple months ago, I think, or a while ago, regarding charging.
I'm glad you're home, I'm fine.
Charging outside contractors who do not have a physical location within the town for business licenses. And this was an oversight on my part, realized that when we hire, the town hires outside contractors, they would also be subject to the business license, but there would not be any sense, frankly, in charging them the license fee, because they would simply pass that cost back to the town. So, this would provide us with the ability to waive that fee in those cases for outside contractors hired for town projects. However, if those outside contractors do work for other customers within the town, they would need to pay the fee, and what do you need to inform us about?
But would not this fee be passed on to any employer or folks that are accessing their, their services?
Well, sure, any, any business would pass on their costs to the customer, but this would be a way of us keeping the cost a little bit down. It's typical in the case like that.
This is just me. I don't feel comfortable in doing this. And the cost is gonna be passed on to the public, it needs to be handled the same way for the town. That's what I think. So, so at the public, and the general businesses need pay, and we need.
Think about it this way, too. The, say the vendor wants to do work for us, we cover the cost, because they charge out that permit fee to us, and then they can use that permit to do business throughout town, and that could be a subsidized fee.
No, Mary said, if they use other.
Only with that.
If they have other. If they have other customers.
We will have already paid that fee.
But you only, you only need one license per year.
Yeah, you only get, you only have to pay it once a year.
It's a part job. So you're not charging every, every customer you have.
So the first job they do is with us, they got a free permit.
About how many contracts are we talking?
Off the top of my head, I, I, not...
Everybody on our approved contract list.
Well, yes, everybody on the approved contract list. I would say more like a couple dozen.
So we are excusing ourselves from, from this rule?
No, we are, we are saying that we will not require a contractor working for us to pay the fee because the expectation is that they would simply pass that cost along to us. For instance, if they had to obtain a building permit from the town, we do not charge them for that because we're essentially paying them in that case.
They still have to obtain the permit. They would still have to obtain the permit for that.
I understand, I understand totally. But, but you also, you also add that, that, that if they do other work for someone else, that it would still have to obtain this...
At least they'd have to pay them.
Right.
So if I'm, if I'm Jack Horace's air conditioning service and I come to the town in July and say that I'm going to fix your air conditioner, thanks for the free license, and then I go to Broad Street and fix someone else's air conditioner, I'm good to go?
Under the current, under the current ordinance, yes. They would still be able to...
Yes, under, no, no, I think that's complicating it. Under the current ordinance, any contractor would need to apply for the business license and pay the $150 regardless of who they're working for.
But this is saying that they don't have to pay for the town?
If they are working directly for the town. However, when they leave the town and go to Broad Street, then they need to inform us that they're now doing work elsewhere and they need to pay that fee.
Because the town is not issuing them a free license to work here.
Correct.
They don't have a license if they go somewhere else, so they don't need to buy it.
But there's a, we would note, right?
And there shouldn't be application. We're not depending on them.
Do other work in town.
We're depending on them being honest as much as we are any other outside contractor.
But the, the permit would just be for work on town property.
The fee would only be waived for work they are directly doing for the town.
Correct. Nobody else.
Nobody else.
Yeah, if you saw Jack Horace's HVAC company in Steve's yard.
Right.
So then somebody else...
Right, this is a case here.
So then that list of town vendors that we talked about, you can send over to Dave's shop and then if they come...
This one should be...
For, to give an example, Home Depot has already reached out and, and applied for their annual license because they know that their subcontractors or vendors are going to be coming into town and doing work. But if the town were to hire Home Depot, they would not pay us for a business license fee because it's already covered. If they were, I'm making, I'm making it worse. I'm sorry, you're making it worse.
It's pretty straightforward.
It is.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this. Second, it's two dozen.
I have a motion by Councilmember Green, or, well, I... Yeah, thank you for the trap out. Councilmember, a second by Councilmember Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that item 3C passes four to one with Councilmember Burrell in opposition.
Mayor, can I ask a question on that? I'm just curious if it is a new license, called always the vendor license. But how is it going? Are we getting, are the folks coming to us?
I know that Dave has had a number of...
Heard a few.
Inquiries and I've heard that a few have actually sent checks in for science.
We, before it hit, before July 1 hit, Carolyn sent out, we looked at a bunch of permits, lists of contractors. We have, Home Depot is one of them. There's a whole slew of roofing companies that they do business with. So she just blasted an email to all of them. If you want to get a permit after July 1, you need to get a town business license. They're used to it.
Right.
So they came, we got them in the mail, we got people walking in with them, we, we got a lot of them. And our regular home improvement guys that we see all the time, same thing. They, they brought it in and we didn't have a complaint from anybody because it's, for the region, it's, it's common.
All right, up next is item 3B, motion 2023-24, RFP 2023-08. Geo thermal unit, Diddler Ward and our public works director, Jimmy Charles, is going to run point.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
We're asking to replace the geo thermal unit that covers the mayor's office, the mayor's assistant's office, and Natalie's office. And we've been out since June on this. The last couple of years, we've been niggling dining ourselves with this unit. We've been putting $1,500 in every year, repeatedly every year. And a quote was again to put about $2,000 in it this year. So we just went out to get a quote to replace the whole unit and stop, turn the damn thing over.
Jimmy, how big is this? Is it a five ton or three ton?
It is a 10, I want to say 10 ton.
10 ton?
Yes.
And what is the efficiency?
Four, four ton.
Four ton? Is that like a 10 DC or...
Okay, I'll read it for you. Am I reading?
It's a loss unit.
Yeah, I know that. Efficiency.
What about Councilmember Horace's HVAC unit?
Better be cheaper. You don't have to get a license. Save me $150.
But everybody spec the same unit, right?
Yes.
Jimmy, where is, where, what, what line is this coming out of the budget? Is this under, what's it under?
Jack's Air.
Jack's Air.
This is coming out of building.
Building to grab like...
Is this...
Because it needs to be done.
The unit can be, well, the unit can be reprisaled. It's not going to be obsolete. But it would be a...
I guess the message, was it, was it budgeted?
It is not budgeted. It's an emergency break. It's been off since June. This whole system has actually been repaired last summer. It's been repaired three times. So this need to be considered for the future is completely geothermal on and just going with the regular system. Like this geothermal is only served by three rooms.
If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the, what is it? RFP, the RFP 2023-8 Berlin Town Hall, June 11th, if you're pleased.
So a motion by Councilmember Horace, a second by Vice President Burrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that it passes unanimously.
Restricting Jack's air conditioning service from...
Yeah. Correct, yeah, they did not... All right, up next is agenda item 3E. Does anybody want to pick any work items from the work session for action?
Motion to overlook.
We do not, we need to make a motion to abandon the contract?
I don't think that that would be a wise motion to make. I think a motion that should be made is if you want a bid or a updated appraisal. That's something we need to move on and we have to determine what that is and where that money is going to come from.
Mayor, can I just add? From all listening, the main thing we need to look at and ask ourselves a question. What are we trying to achieve? Why are we selling a lot? We're not going to cover the debt even if you sell four lots or three lots or two or one. But that is still going to be outstanding and we're going to lose the prime location for the land that we're going to have in the future. So leaving that to sell one lot is not going to help us anyhow. That's, that's how I see it. It's just my view on that.
Where could the money come from if we wanted to get an updated appraisal? It would have to come out of reserves, wouldn't it?
We have no budget for appraisal. And demolition brand is on a very strict timeframe. Mary and I were discussing that.
Plus you couldn't use the funds for, you can't use CHCD funds for the appraisal.
Exactly.
So it would have to come out of reserves.
So your decision needs to be based with what are we trying to do, first of all? Why are we selling? So the why is answered and then we need to move forward with the demolition brand as soon as possible. Even if you demolish half of the building worth, sell me bricks out of it or clean something around, but utilizing that $500,000 is very, very important.
I don't think we're actioning that this evening. I think it's whether or not the group would like an appraisal or not. And if so, I think that we need to move forward with that sooner rather than later.
I just also want to add that if I reach out to Oceon and they come back with a price that is greater than my spending limit, which I've completely gone to life on.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will need to email you to get a consensus to move forward. I just want that out.
So is, I would like guidance on whether that's something you want, first of all. But do you want an appraisal or do you just want us to get a quote on and email you? Like, what do you...
If we're going to continue talks with Palmer for the possibility of him buying just 57, I think we need to do our due diligence to get an appraisal. As I admitted to, if we're not, then we need to start moving on with demolition.
I couldn't agree more.
Oh, well, I, I love the opinion, I love the opinion that I think we owe it to everyone involved to get that reappraisal. And I will go ahead and make that motion. That we wait for Jay's question.
So one thing Maurice said kind of intrigued me. She said, why couldn't that be a public works building retrofit? Is that even possible? Because you're talking about building in the public works building.
I don't know if you'd have enough funding to just refurbish the building just to even start. There's no electric.
There is electric to a building. We'd have to fix the service.
It would be, it would be a complete, you know...
There's no water.
That's a lot of space for a home.
Well, no, you would tear down, you would tear down a portion of the building to save the front half. I'm saying, is that even possible?
That would be, if you guys deem that's, I mean...
Anything possible.
In that case, if you can repurpose an old building and take down what you needed to.
Correct, but I mean, it's...
It also doesn't add to the tax base. It also doesn't really hit the marks for an economic side of things. Like, which is what I want to, I'm going to pull what the grant parameters were that we applied for just so everybody has an idea of what the scope was for those funds.
So Jay, would you be suggesting that we use the, also use the $400,000 that's allocated for public works buildings to assist in this?
Yes, for the refit.
We already have.
Refit of the portion you say.
Yeah.
Which would be quite a bit.
But for right now, I have a question to start on a look. What's the appraisal going to give you? Let's say we have an appraisal today and we have in front of you a number that 57 worth XYZ.
It's going to give, it's currently appraised as residential and we would do it as B2, which is mixed use.
Is the council positioned to begin talking more in depth with Mr. Ellis at this point?
Yes, you have put a plan on the table of what commercial uses you would be asking for appraisal to be. So that's another decision happening to me.
Well, even if it's not Palmer that we have this discussion with, I think that we need to know if this, if we're selling this and whomever it is is going to propose rezoning commercial, we need to know before we even get to that person what we're, what they're working with. Because they, at this stage, I feel that the developer knows far more than we do and we need to know a little bit more so that we know who we're talking about.
Me too.
That's my take on it.
So I guess the decision I'm going to ask for tonight, if you are moving forward unanimously with the appraisal, regardless of the price of appraisal, whether it's above Mary's...
I don't anticipate that, but I just wanted...
It's not, you still have to make a decision to answer to the budget. It is not budgeted. My item, whether it's 5, 10, or 15, or 20, you need to make a decision to, if I decline into appraisal, this number won't step.
Steve, did you have a question? Tom?
Yeah, I just think that, first of all, the timeline again is concerned. I do think we have a general sense of what this property will appraise at commercially based on Nextdoor. Wyatt Harrison's property, it's Willow actually, but, you know, $180,000 per acre. And I think we also know where Crystal Ventures, where their flexibility is. But you all, subcommittee not able to get him off the appraised value of that part of all parcels. I just want us to be productive and I just am continuing to be very, very concerned about the timeline and the demo. And I really wonder up here, if we go through all this, are the votes even there to proceed with talking with Palmer? And that's where I'm kind of, I don't think they are. And I guess that's a concern to me that we're spending money that we don't have. And I think it's going to come back higher than the developers willing to pay based on what the subcommittee was able to assume you guys negotiated this and it was at the appraised amount.
And my concern is that it's going to cost us way more money when we start demo. And what I've said since day one is where is that money going to come from? So if it's higher than $500,000 or $460,000, really is what we have, where is that additional money going to come from? We just built up our reserves. Are we going to take it to demo the building down where it needs to be? It's not viable.
So can I make a suggestion as far as the demolition? We start focusing, and I have zero sense of direction, so forgive me. I think it's north of the plant, towards the lagoons.
Yeah, absolutely.
Instead of starting at the street, we start at the back and move forward. 500, no, 450,000 dollars worth. I don't see much of that building being able to be done in a reasonable amount of time. And quite frankly, my biggest concern here is time for the amount that we have available on the grant. However, if we start closing the lagoon with the water...
Which either way, we're going to keep, so.
Well, that would be, that would need to be a decision that you would need to make. If we redirect the engineers to start looking at demolition from that end, but keep the water tower.
I meant parcel.
Okay, okay. You're talking, I thought you meant, because I know that some discussion have been held about making benefits or...
I don't know if we'll get another opportunity with the HCD's restricted demo.
I absolutely do know what to let this money slip away.
The money that we have took time to get.
Yes, and it, they don't like to promote or to, to commit money to communities that end up not using it.
Correct. Or don't use it for the intended purpose within the ring.
So then why don't we, okay, just to take your, to make, to take Mary's, I mean, you can't talk to me, take Mary's idea and develop an RFP, if I said it right?
Yes.
To start, well, to an RFP to use the grant, starting from the back and going forward. That way, something's happening. We're using it. And we can also, if the group, the community decides to continue discussions, we can, we have that window still available to us. And if it goes into, goes Palmer, the grant's not entirely used.
Start now, start, start the work, use the, use the funding.
Yeah, I would much rather turn away a portion of the grant than lose the whole.
I don't want to turn away any.
No, I don't want to turn away any.
But this way, but this, but this way, either way, it's going to be...
But it's not, what does the value add of that bring?
Like, because we still are keeping the back parcel. This grant is for the entire thing.
That's not changing at all. No matter what we do, it's not going to change. The back parcel being kept.
But I think that we're using the grant and we're keeping it. Okay, frankly, someone told me that I would like, they would like us to use the grant that was given to Berlin for Berlin. And we're keeping it in parcel 52. So start, I like the, start in the back.
Actually, I think that what I'm talking about is still on parcel 57.
Yeah, it is.
It's still, yeah.
I just struggle with what's the end result? You should cut a building. You should cut a building.
Yeah.
And it's still a big blemish entering a parcel of land that's designed to be apart or redeveloped. You, your, your net change is not anything positive.
And if you take down the back floor and leave a portion of the building, how do you secure the?
I don't, I don't.
Well, hold on.
I think there could be four hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of work without actually getting to, to the physical.
It's going to be expensive.
Because you've got the whole fence shed area and all that.
Please do have someone pull that up.
I like changing.
Mayor Council, just keep in mind too that, and I don't, I shouldn't say that, but the building also does have expenses and leg maintenance.
Yeah, he's mentioned that.
So I don't want you all to think, forget about that. That could be, you know, that could be, there could be other levers money, but you're, you're, before you can tear the building down, you have to get a environmental study done of the material inside of the building. If this is involved inside of the building, you will not be able to demo this building until that is removed and properly remediated, remediated properly.
That could be part of the demolition. It could be included in the demolition contract.
So.
But it all adds expense and takes away from that four hundred fifty thousand.
You said that the appraisal, that net change probably wouldn't be significant.
Well, I think, I think it's going to be too high, right? Road, looking at one point seven million, if you do the math.
But you're using raw land.
I am, you're right.
And you have to devalue an asset.
And that's very fair.
That is a true liability.
So another thing about the appraisal is, and that's what he brought up today, is do we lift the restrictions and the uses to give maximum value of what the assessment's going to say? Assuming we can get the assessment done, because we do have to restrict it.
Yeah, I mean, any number we get, we will have to write down every time we put another restriction on that intended use.
Well, does that take us back to putting the brakes on Palmer Gillis or whatever they refer to themselves as the ventures, whatever the venture companies.
Ventures, ventures.
Whatever.
Putting a, putting the brake pedal. To make a decision on the super grand.
We have until then, I mean, honestly, we have until the end of August to make that decision. I think that. Go ahead, Councilman.
Oh, I'm not saying anything. I'm just going to.
So if, the point of contention appears to be what is valued. I don't think that the change, Steve, I have to agree with you. I don't think that the overall change from what we're getting to what we're going to end up with, we're still going to have to do some work to write down whatever we deem is appropriate for the, for the caveats that we apply to that.
So then just, just math from the paperwork. You're at one point three or one point.
I think that's way too high.
Well, I'm just saying.
That is way too high.
All right, for sure.
I think, I mean, I'm not an appraiser, but.
I mean, neither am I.
When you look at.
Subtracting stuff.
Can you put the overlay up again, please, that we were just looking at? Because when, when you're doing your math, Jack, you're basing it off of ten acres, right?
No, I took the.
What do you use?
I took the, and I'm probably not the greatest, but I took the full, I took the three point three, subtracting what we weren't, including, I took two point nine, so we've got what we weren't.
No, no, okay. So when we, when we look at this road bend and we look to the left, can you advance to the next slide? Because it should have next, whichever one has the colored.
Yeah, there we are. Thank you.
That left parcel is fifty-seven. And if you look at where the road kind of kicks to the, to the port of the lot, everything from there back was parking. And that was a point that the subcommittee stuck with, that that was parking that was flexible. It wasn't just for building fifty-seven, but it was for overflow parking. The town had full access, the citizens had full access to be able to park it. So really, we're looking from where that little bend is or where four, ten kind of comes across toward Old Ocean City Boulevard. For that asset, I don't see anything north of a million. I really struggle to see that.
I know.
That's still more than, how about that?
I mean, but.
Well, you can tell that sitting right here, when you talked tonight with Cockburn about. Exactly.
At eight hundred, you asked him?
No, I asked him if he'd reappraise it at a commercial value.
Exactly.
Would he be willing to pay more?
What, what I'm trying to talk through is the valuation of the, to that building, basically, immediately around it. I mean, I struggle to see a valuation of a million dollars. Does anybody else? I mean.
Yes, I think Matt, was Matt Sterro raised some great points.
He did?
Risk versus reward. And I'd like for it to be somebody else's problem. So I just disagree with some of the, some of the comments that were made about the why. I don't see this particular parcel as a land of opportunity. I don't, I don't see third of businesses either, because I don't think third of businesses is what we want out there. But I also believe that the developer, I have to come off of that number. But I just, guys, I just, I'm not sure I'm going to go for an appraisal. I think we have an idea of what he's willing to pay and that's going to be the negotiations, in my opinion.
And then it all hinges on demo. If it all comes out in the twelfth.
With demo, whether we decide to take it down ourselves or.
That's been the crux of the whole thing.
If you're willing to pay more than you have to.
Yeah, but I, I feel like we've had these two options. We've never fully committed to one or the other. We've kind of like written a fence, we like this one a little bit, we like that one a little bit. We've never really fully committed. And I think it's, it's somewhat rooted to Coastal Ventures' properties. And I think we, we need to have some definitive end. It needs to be, we either take this on ourselves and we understand what that is, or we take on this project with a partner. And that partnership looks like us putting our five hundred thousand dollar grant up. I mean, I'm with Steve. I see nothing but liabilities with, now, I, I think, Steve, when you said you see it as a liability, not.
I don't see that as a land of really opportunities.
Right, and I want to just say for both of us, at least when I say it, and I think I speak for both of us, when we, that's just with the building.
Right.
What, opportunity exists with one ninety-one, four-ten, and fifty-two. But with that building, there are a lot of unknowns. And at the end of the day, it's the first thing you see.
Yeah, we heard from the planning commission and parks, both said, move on.
Yeah, but Jay, we've been dealing with this for how long?
I can't imagine.
We've been dealing with this for a while. We've got a lot of information in front of us. They've, I value their opinions, I value their feedback. But this was really the first bite of the apple they had at this. And we've chewed on it for years.
Absolutely.
I mean, so I, I see their point, but even the parks commission said, if you were going to sell anything, we see selling fifty-seven and not the others. Even some members of the planning commission said, sell fifty-seven and not the others. I, I mean, I even talked to the chair of the planning commission. I said, what's your general consensus? He said, I think you can give consensus around selling fifty-seven. And I mean, it seems like a logical step. And I have no problem shelving the other portions of it. So do we want to scrap E or do we want something there? Four, or a three E?
I mean, I'll go ahead and make a question. Should we do appraisal for B two, for parcel fifty-seven?
A motion by Councilmember Oris to get an updated appraisal for fifty-seven.
And where to kind of pay for.
Have to come out of reserves.
I don't think that it would be terrifically expensive.
But still, it needs to come out of reserves.
I do amend that to not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Oh, I think you're, I think that's way high.
Two to ten thousand.
Yeah, don't exceed ten. I think you're even way high on that, but.
I would agree. I don't think it's going to cost anywhere near there. I just.
Because it's an update.
I like to be of a little cautious.
Well, then I'll just amend the motion for an updated appraisal for parcel fifty-seven for B two, assuming not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Come for the search.
Yeah, come for the search.
Okay, so there's the motion.
Is it possible this cost shared with the potential buyer?
No.
No, it's too much up in there.
So a motion and a second by Councilmember Ner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Let the record reflect that the motion passes four to one with Councilmember Green in opposition. Thank you all. We'll contact them tomorrow morning.
So with that being said, are they, the thought with, with their, is they're going to use information they already have and just remember to do what they have?
Well, I can't speak for what they're processing, but that seems to be logical.
Recent comparables.
So my next question then is, while they're doing that, do we still start the process with DBF? Or do we wait until they tell us what they're going to do with the movie?
Yeah, we're not at a spot with DBF yet.
Either way, we would have been at the end of all this, right?
Yeah, I think let's, take our time on that respect. Like, we've got two more meetings before.
And that's four weeks.
B days.
DBF is very aware that we're working on this and they're kind of waiting to hear from us, but we have to be respectful of what they're willing to do.
Yeah, for sure.
The other thing is, Mary, I don't know if you think it's fruitful that to share the building condition assessment with them, maybe it will give them a.
I'm, I'm sure they go, but absolutely.
All right, so next is agenda item number four, and that's a presentation, four and five, by the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company E. M. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to clarify something you just said, to share the building.
Assessment.
With the appraiser?
Right.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry you said that.
Yeah, I realized there was a.
Thank you, welcome. Sorry for the delay in timing. Before we begin, David Gassell has a message he would like.
Please bear with me because I left my glasses on tonight. Sarah letting me pair of cheaters, but they're, they're not strong enough. This statement was drafted in conjunction with Mr. Joe Moore, and he just follows. The mayor and council negotiated a contract for fire and rescue services provided by the Berlin Fire Company for fiscal year 2023, 2024. The mayor and council fully understand that the BFC is an independent contractor and is not a town department. Both parties negotiating good faith and the mayor and council are proud of the services that the BFC provides and are equally proud of the sacrifices that the members of the BFC provide to the citizens of Berlin. Any perceived comments about the contract negotiations between the mayor and council and the fire company which hold otherwise are not, not reflected as to what occurred.
Thank you, David. David? Sorry, I can't see. Good Cheryl, President, Chief RJ Root.
We always have to think about it.
I do. I want to call you Anthony so badly. Sorry. Go ahead.
We'll start with the fire company.
I want to have an ass.
Quarterly report and then chief, as well as I, when we get to the ministry of four one, have some very, very preliminary, he'll have some accurate numbers on the calls for the end of fiscal year. I have some estimates because, you know, we're still getting fiscal year bills and for work that was done prior to June thirty. So April first through June thirtieth, the last quarter of the year, we had thirty-seven calls were in town, forty-seven calls were out of town for fire calls. Decreased a little bit from the last, last year's quarters, last year, same quarter. Fire calls were down a little bit. The next slide shows our year-end calls from July first to June thirty. We had a hundred and fifty-five total calls in the town, two hundred and fifteen calls out of town.
Somebody needs a deputy report.
Yeah, I couldn't, you said that it was unfounded.
That was chair.
Um, the last quarter of the year, Wednesdays, Fridays seem to be the busier days, followed by Thursdays. Busiest times of the day were five to six P. M., followed by the ten to eleven timeframe and then three to four. And as a year total, busiest days were Fridays and Wednesdays. Busiest timeframe for the year is between three and five and five and six. Uh, the last quarter, April first, June thirtieth, there was nine times where we had two or more active incidents occurring at the same time. The last quarter, there was twelve times that that occurred. And overall, for the last year, we had forty-four times that we had two or more fire calls or rescue calls happening at the same exact time. Response times are right around the three minutes, fifty-seven seconds. That's a one second decrease from the last quarter and eleven seconds from the same quarter last year. Overall, for the year, response time averaged three minutes, fifty-four seconds. And that was the same for the fiscal year last year, right around that three minutes and fifty-four second mark. Which again, just a reminder, the county, the county requires us to be out within six minutes. For the quarter, for the manpower, the emergency calls, throw over seven hundred and seventy-six, seven hundred and eighty-six hours for calls and five hundred and sixty-three hours for non-emergency events. And again, this is kept by our computerized system that we all use our key files, the members do that. So this is only for events where the entire fire technical call, it doesn't count for, like us here tonight, or individual members who are meeting building people or us up there doing, preparing these reports. These are for company-wide events. So there's many more volunteer hours than what you see there. For the fiscal year, volunteer emergency calls, almost thirty-three hundred. Man-hours, three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six, one hundred and five, and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-six, point nine five. So you see just about as many hours, a hundred less, doing training, other things, plus all the individual things, either gear or the company-wide events. So just so much time spent doing other things as responding to emergency calls. No real revenue budget highlights for the quarter. A quick summary of the year, which you'll get the full report, it's due by September thirtieth at our council prepared. Quick look, our donations increased approximately nine thousand hours. Most of that were some new thousand dollar donors. For people who don't know what that is, that's a plaque, you should come into the four-year, the headquarters station, businesses or individuals, and they can do it in any name that they want. A member of somebody, their own name, business name, they get a small little bar plaque once they donate a thousand hours, and they can do that over a five-year period. So you can do that all at one time, two hundred dollars a year, five years, six hundred, four hundred, as long as it ends up to a thousand, and they get some recognition for it. We also had some persons deceased throughout the year and decided in their obituary to list the fire company as a memorial donor. Fundraising about two thousand hour decrease, we talked about that several times through the year as the food cost and the manpower went down. You know, we stopped our Friday night dinners, it just wasn't cost-effective. Or a smart move manpower-wise, to continue to have the numbers come up for those events. More important, have them available for the emergency calls. Our first full year of invoicing, we only got about four thousand hours in our first year of invoice. The spend topics for the quarter, the last quarter, we about twenty thousand hours over. We have one build that work has almost been completed, but the majority of the work was done this fiscal year, charged this fiscal year to repair a pump on an engine that failed its test. And then we have one pending that got to get charged next fiscal year because the work won't get started until that other engine comes back. So we are over twenty thousand in that vehicle maintenance. The building was also for the, going into the yearly thing, the building was also over twenty thousand because as we budgeted, we did not budget anything really for breakdowns. So anytime we had a breakdown throughout the fiscal year, that created over budget item. How did we make it work? We cut our operations equipment, chief basically bought very. We cut our operations equipment, chief basically bought vertical equipment throughout the year. We were fortunate, as you all saw, some, during some part of the fiscal year, the fuel prices did come down, so that saved us a little money. Fire prevention, communication, volunteer incentives, were all areas that we were able to cut back for, for the economy that made that balance out. Just a slide that we keep in there, just again, for just everybody's review, for the surplus and ARCA funds, the recent ad bradis, two hundred and twenty thousand that town has allocated, except they took some out this year to funding a five-twenty-four outbreak. We still haven't heard of our grant application, like we tell you every quarter, that runs only federal fiscal year, and they're awarding things every so often. Good news, and I heard, Mary, say, say for her, your town administrator is pulling, you never know till you get that letter. But the good news is, we haven't got that rejection letter either. So as long as we don't have the rejection letter, hope is always there. So since the fiscal year, it is through till October, so. But I agree wholeheartedly with the town administrator, you don't give anything to get one of those letters yesterday, but we are, we are hopeful. And it's good, again, the good thing is, there's rounds that are going out, and we are not receiving any of that. So our capital apparatus replacement, we've gone through that before, and had a work session on that. We do have that two-point-five million dollar logo, which you'll see in the year-end financials, it's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar payment for fifteen slash sixteen years, and it's funded by the out-of-county fund.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the fire company report?
Yeah, I do, Dave, and I apologize, because I didn't, like, I was gonna be asking some of these questions, so I understand if you gotta get back to us. So I looked back a little bit, and I did a calendar year where you guys were, as you do fiscal. But it appears that, at least in the last year and a half or so, for fire only, that around sixty percent are out of town and forty percent are in town calls. Would you agree?
That's been our, for the last probably ten years, that's where we stay on fire, and it's gonna be the exact opposite on EMS. And we've been running that trend for probably ten years.
Okay. So I guess, I mean, on the, and my other question, the, when I had asked all of last year, what the fireside would need to be, how do you sustainable, and you had said it was three hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, that, did that mean three hundred and fifty from the town?
Right, that's.
Including the, whatever other stuff you get.
That's what the study substantiated, that's what we ask for every year when we come to, even look at our historical budgets, it's the two hundred thousand operating and the one-fifty in capital that we haven't really asked for, we've talked about it, and that is on actually the first agenda item for our work session meetings that should start next month, per contract, we're supposed to have a quarterly work session meeting with the fire company and the EMS corporation. I have that letter ready, ready to go, we just need to read over it, have our accountant read over it again. It'll have some of those numbers, but I think that should be our first work session next month, is the fire, because the fire company, county work is a little easier, with no employees, it'll be done first, hopefully to be, can be done in August, so that first work session, that's what we need to talk about. So you will know really our next year's budget request, probably the next forty-five days. So you'll know how to, you'll know how to plan. And so it's no surprise, it's probably gonna be the two hundred and some operating and one-fifty for capital.
That was my other question, thank you.
Do we have any additional questions for the fire company report?
I still think you guys should do the calendar.
And I had that, and I had, so, Ms. Nichols, I had that as part of the agenda, the first work session, I have all those numbers for you.
Great.
Of what it would cost, and how maybe you think those forward funds could be obtained, what the town forward funds that project, or you have an idea. But I have all those numbers ready to go for our first work session.
Are you ready for having some folks at some of our events also, for a boot drive? I think those numbers should be pretty.
For what?
Like, we've talked about some other fundraisers also, like having some of your folks at our town events, or the farmer's market, doing like blood pressures and stuff like that.
And the problem with that, Mayor, just to be honest with you, and the chief can chime in, is there's a weekend events with the manpower, and just like you see me, I've been off a little more than I can chew sometimes, withdrawing the chamber. I've had a run from the event, you know, almost out of breath here, because I know I'm the only one in town that can drive the engine on those Saturdays, like, and what I might remember is the, and it was raining that day, it's spring cruiser. So, so Mayor, and you mentioned our cadets, but same thing, I just talked today with our assistant chief, who works for the cadets, and he was sending out pages and talking to them today about the upcoming National Night Out, and the ones he talked to, I was right there when he had them on the phone, they're working, they're somewhere else, they're working. And or they're going on their August vacation with their family, because they know school's gonna get ready to start, or football. So it becomes a manpower issue, so.
Volunteerism over, overall, is down drastically, and it's not just Berlin Fire Company, it's nationwide. And, you know, it, it's fantastic, and I'll tell you flat out, July 4th fireworks, I had three people standing by at the fireworks, myself and two others, and then there was two people at the firehouse. Volunteer-wise, we still had our career crew, we kept them, and the firehouse was available. But used to be, July 4th fireworks, we'd fill up two or three engines, stage them all at the town. Just volunteerism as a whole is down. Getting people to come out on weekends for special events is very tough. We've got a countywide training session coming up, that we've sent out countywide, many, many notifications, we've gotten four people countywide to sign up. It's not costing anybody anything really to, to do this training, but, you know, it's just getting people away from their full-time jobs, getting people away from family life and everything else is tough. And then, you know, you've got a small piece of the one day, that you leave three or four times during the day to go on a call, and you're going for an hour here, and an hour there, and an hour there, and, you know, then you turn around and you ask them to come up for three or four hours for something else, and then we've got meetings and drills and training, and there's a lot that goes on, there's a lot going on. It's not something we completely ignore. We have asked and mentioned it, but it's not something that's.
Have you looked into associate membership?
We have. We've, we've talked about it numerous times, we need to model some places like Ocean City, I use them for an example, they have an associate membership program. So yes, it is something that we're talking about, we're looking at.
Because currently, your, your requirements for volunteer status are what, still fifty points?
Yes.
So that's sometimes a heavy lift, whereas the associate memberships are sometimes a fraction of that.
And that's just like a new member. You get a new member, you get a new member that comes in the fire company.
So the, it takes, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it takes fifty times for somebody coming to the firehouse to mark up for a call or an extra event to be a full member.
So, so calls will count as a point if they come up for a training detail or, training or standby detail every three hours?
I don't wanna quote it, because it's a complicated law, it's on the, posted, it's actually a marital law, it's counted law.
But at the end of the day, you need fifty points, even if you put the Berlin Fire Company to be a full member.
Yep.
Whereas associate memberships, they take folks that may have training and skill sets, that can't meet the fifty points, but can help assist, drive the fire truck, the staff and ambulance, help with blood pressure check, to be able to do that at a fraction of those points.
And what can an associate member do?
They can restrict that as an organization.
Yeah. And typically, an associate member wouldn't be allowed to, say, vote or hold the position of officer, or chief, or president, or something like that, because they're not required to maintain the same membership. So traditionally, that's the, that's the main difference. They still ride the fire trucks, they're still a member, but when it comes to making decisions about the department or holding an office, they're not allowed to participate in those.
So for your EMS, just one reminder, use the chance at the public, our fire company annual drive went out in July, so that has in it how community members can donate to the fire company any amount that they wish. They can donate to the thousand-dollar fund, or the building funds, or the capital apparatus or equipment fund. So they have plenty of choices if they wanna donate those funds to the town bank, and they put them in the appropriate categories that has directions. So that gets mailed out every, every July.
Thank you.
EMS, so April 1st to June 30th, the in-town calls for the quarter, three hundred and six. So, Mr. Morris, here's your fifty-nine point eight-eight percent, so about sixty percent in town, with forty out of town. Increase from last year, sixty more in-town calls for the quarter. So for the year, for EMS, fiscal year, one thousand, two hundred and fifty-four calls, again, a little under sixty percent of the calls are in town, forty-one out of town. Last year, we had an increase of one hundred and thirteen more in-town calls. Transports for the quarter, two hundred and sixty-five in town, almost ninety percent of our calls in town that we get to are transported. Out of town, one hundred and thirteen transported, ninety-two non-transported. Increase in town transports, eighty-two over the last fiscal year. That's the quarter, and then for the year, nine hundred and eighteen in-town transports, seventy-three percent, and then out of town, three hundred and thirty-six. Increase in town transports over the whole fiscal year of one hundred and sixty. EMS for the quarter, busiest days, Thursday, followed by Wednesday. Busiest times, three and three to four P M. I think that's type of, sorry about that. Busiest time, three to four P M. And then for the station, there's five to responding time. This is over a minute, sixty-six seconds. This does include, you know, third round calls that are volunteer responses, which there's people coming from home. Increase in simultaneous calls, that report that I had for you last wouldn't run, so once I get that, I'll email that to you all, that'll tell you the number of simultaneous calls EMS had, the chief reported for the fire. So last year is one point one-three, or sixty-eight seconds, so we have dropped our response time down a few seconds over here. So EMS quarterly highlights for revenue, invoicing, you know, forty thousand hours higher, that's due to call volume, you just heard about the number of transports that we went up, so those are the ones we invoice for, and we transport. Additional personnel, less calls answered by additional other companies, so we're not, what we call scratching calls, we're handling our costs of service, because we have two crews on the end of town. For the fiscal year, with the contract stipulating that one hundred and twenty-five thousand are only to be used for empty services that we can provide documentation to the town, nine thousand dollars or less for that, because we did have more of a personnel, did not take health insurance. So the invoices, the company over the year, you know, sixty-five thousand dollar increase revenue, and the donations were six thousand hours above budget, and you'll see where that money was spent when we get to the, to the next page. So the expect budget, right before the end of fiscal year, we had a major engine repair on our oldest ambulance, and this is what we've talked about before, we tried to extend the life lives of them, this is our ambulance that's getting close to the ten years, seven thousand dollar engine repair, and we've had the overtime shift coverage, with a new overtime calculation, plus it's covered shifts as we get into summer, it's like any other quarter, people want off work, so you have to cover the shifts with overtime. So our overages, you see, we pretty well eat up the additional income, personnel, medical supplies, computer supplies, professional fees, vehicle maintenance repair, and medical equipment. We're able to cover that, cover that with the increase in invoices. So again, we'll have the final numbers closer to September. Just a reminder, the capital funds for the EMS, the ambulance replacements are due in 2025, 2027, and 2029. Just an update, the ambulance for 2025, we should have that contract any day now, because we've gotta get that signed, it takes two years to get in, and we've catalogged the pricing, and we just had another price increase, but I've been told by the manufacturer, they will not put that on this contract, this last one, because it's had the June 30th pricing. All the county funds received for ambulances, applications, and this reset this year, we use that cash flow, which will update in a future work session, the cash flow. So we had our loan payments, and we'll have a loan payment, most likely ones, new ambulance, currently the town's not providing those funds, we talked about it, and that'll be part of our first work session for EMS, is to bring everybody up to date on that cash flow. Other funding information, cardiac monitors were approved, they're ordered, expected delivery in September, just had all of our ones currently serviced to get us through, because we have to have them inspected, so we just did those, and we had, we've got a breakdown on one, but luckily they could find the part, so that's been ordered, because we gotta keep it serviced, if the new ones are ordered. We talked about, you know, the met response vehicle, and the ambulance replacements, it's gonna be around four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We're talking about a contingency fund and future personnel, and then the town was gracious enough, again, this year's contract, to provide additional funds for the two empty sessions, but appreciate it, keep us having four personnel there upon you.
Can you go back to revenue budget highlights? In the future presentations now, you should be coming up on a full year's worth of data from your new invoicing company, right?
October, I think it's October 1st.
So for the next quarter, can you show the change in revenue from the previous quarter to the current, like, the previous year's quarter to the current year's quarter?
Say that again.
So for this quarter that you're presenting right now, in the next presentation, show that change in revenue from last year, same quarter.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying? Two, one of.
Yeah, just so everybody understands, it won't, it won't give you an accurate number, because our call volume is up, and I can no longer access the old building company records, so we will do our best, I'll have Mr. Bergia assist with that, because our call volume's up.
That's, that's okay, I mean, we're seeing the change in the costs for call lines, too, so if you'd like to see.
But we will do that, I just wanna put that caveat out there, that our old building company contract expired, I cannot go back to the end of the report, so we'll do our best, we can, we'll give you the number, but there's gotta be a caveat.
Thank you. Any questions for EMS? All right. Thank you. We appreciate everything you do.
Just wanna close again, we'll have that letter to you by the end of the week, with those dates for the work sessions, we're looking at probably the third Mondays of the month, they probably work the best, it's not on the second or fourth, which both of us meet. And then some of the agenda items, I pulled out July's letter from last year, so, she's listening to agenda items.
You don't think we can make a second or fourth Monday work?
There's no way we can make this work, because we're meeting and you're meeting, you see what happened tonight, we're always rushed, I, I don't know, they, they just can't work. I mean, you all see that, like, with Harrow Park, you're over, under, we can't be in two places at the same time, and you.
I think it would be easier with the group, if we all met on one of our previously, like, whatever, on second or fourth Monday, just either before as a work session, or after as a work session. I think that would be the best, because it's already on everybody's calendar, so it would be an easy way for us to say, hey, look, we're gonna meet here at five-thirty to six-thirty, go over, because you all start at six-thirty, go over the items, and.
We'll have to discuss that further.
And just for your planning, we're looking in September probably, because.
It'll have to be prior to that, because each corporation has to meet once a quarter, so I would say you're gonna have to do one in August and one in September.
And don't know if we'll be able to do August, because we've got to meet this deadline for Harrow Park.
Okay.
So I'd have to do two in September. I think what we would probably say is, like, the first meeting, and then the second meeting in September.
The second and fourth, I can always say that they can't, they can't work, we've all tried that before.
Okay, we'll, we'll see what we can come up with.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's see, up next is Town Administrator Report and Departmental.
Excuse me, I just have a couple of quick things. I mentioned previously that Natalie graduated from the University of Baltimore, Shaver Center for Public Policy, that graduation ceremony.
We have the picture, right?
Was actually last week, yes. I don't know if we have it.
Oh, two, ten, good. You've been saved.
But I'm also very pleased to announce that Kelsey has been granted a scholarship. But I'm also very pleased to announce that Kelsey has been granted a scholarship to go through the same program. So she will be taking that.
Congratulations.
Send an email.
The other item that I have is that I will be on vacation from August 3rd through 11th. And then I'm going to turn it over. Actually, I'm going to turn it to Kate first, because hers will be quick, and then Jamie.
We just wanted to provide a firm reminder that the National Light Act is next Tuesday, August 1st until 7th at Henry Park. The park commissioner will of course be attending as usual, handing out a prepaid address. But it really is a very important event, with the intent to strengthen and build a partnership between law enforcement and community. So if you don't have any sewing next Tuesday, please plan on attending Henry Park.
We will see you there?
On 4/7 next Tuesday, August 1st.
At Henry Park.
At Henry Park.
Good job.
I will keep mine short and sweet, but we have got tentative, we should be starting our meter replacement program in four weeks. We're working on some stuff for the mayor for press releases and some areas, how the locations we're going to start in first. I want to stress one thing to people and the residents, if they're listening, if not, if you see them, make sure they, make sure the meters cleaned off and they can access them easily. If you have bushes that's been planted there for 20 years and you don't want them chopped up by us, you better move them because they're here to move, put meters in, and to move fairly quick. It is in our code that if it obstructs in our meter, we are allowed to trim it back, move it, or whatever, dig it up. I will get with Dave next week or this week and put it in our flyers, so when it goes out, if people have a question about that. But we're going to put in there, there's going to be some water interruptions, there's going to be some water lines leaking, there's going to definitely probably be some discolored water because where we're cutting water off and putting new meters in. And I really truly think a lot of people are going to get sticker shock when they get a new meter and they're getting built correctly. We will keep the old meters in case somebody comes out and complains, but we don't, we're not certified to bench test them, but we can test them. But I'd say people are going to get a fairly good sticker shock on some of the older meters that when we put these new meters in, they're going to be saying, oh. So they're going to be wondering what really they have been using, so.
Well, thank you for that, and we'll be proactive in the messenger, so.
Yes, and we might, I told Mary, we're going to get some, and Jimmy, we had a meeting last week, we're going to get some sign, yard signs, and put up in strategic areas and try to move them, you know. And I'm going to talk to the state highways, see if we can get maybe one or two VMAs and put on Main Street, just to, you know, I'm thinking down by 346 and 818, and then one down South Main Street. As you come in there, buy a Worcester prep and just try to stress it as hard as we can. They see discolored water, you know, they might have to run it for a few minutes, but we'll try to work on it the best we can to get it published, you know, out there to the residents.
We're going to be putting it out as many ways as we can think of, and as many ways as we can think of.
Add a few signs for over, out, at C P or wherever you want, Main Street, and branch as well, and flowers, so that they're ready.
And also...
Or maybe recycle them as we target.
We are. That's what our calls. And you will hear this again. So don't forget, you will hear it at the next meeting, the following meeting, until we're completed. But they're like...
When we've lost electricity for...
Right.
But they are talking about, the tentative schedule, most of the two-inch meters and others can be changed out in 45 days or less, is what their plans are. So they're going to come in, hit us hard, in and out.
So can we kind of, can we like, you said it starts in four weeks?
We're hoping to start in four weeks. That's our goal. We've got some, you know, we've got some stuff we got to work on. The contractor has some stuff on their end, the company, assistant, the company installing Goody Hill, vetos said they could be here like 30 days. So we're trying to coordinate everything so that when they come in town, we can move.
Can we, can we kind of start slowly doing this PR campaign?
That's, that's the intent. This was, this was step one.
Yeah.
And the bulletin goes out next weekend, so there'll be something in there.
Yeah. And then we were, we were going to read, since we do have accounts, we're on the count, so we were going to ask if we could run a small ad and put it in the newspaper because it still gets, you know, newspapers still a good resource. A lot of people still come and get the dispatch in Ocean City today. So we were going to run a little spot out too in that and just try to push it as hard as we can because, you know, people are going to be, you know, people are going to be wondering what's going on. So we want to make sure they're aware and...
Do you agree?
Do you have your sign already?
And by the way, the company that's doing the installation will need to apply for the business license and get that on the record.
Where does one find their water meter, just hypothetically?
Well, yours is under there.
Your plan is under there.
Can I tell you, ours is covered.
Ours is covered up?
Yeah, not necessarily. Never prior.
We were out there the other day by your house, but one of the reasons, a lot of people know where their meters are because they're trying to make sure they're covered up with mulch, trees, plants. But, you know, we will look out on the street, you should see a blue mark, and use it within line with that blue mark. Our meter readers touch them every month, so they're pretty familiar with them. But you will see blue marks go down because we're hoping they'll paint the blue marks. And all our, when they're doing this, all our meters will be GPS pinpointed. So that way, if we have a leak, or, not a leak, but if, you know, we won't be touching them every month from now on after this is all installed. So if you have a leak at your house, we can go in with our phone or our iPad and like get us within so many inches versus right now. If it snows, you're shoveling snow off the sidewalk to find the blue mark and stuff.
And find the meme of somebody running to the window. That's going to be Steve or a meter reader.
15-minute showers.
And Jamie, these meters won't alter anybody's water pressure in any way?
No, sir. It will affect anything with your meter pressure. If anything, some of the older ones, it could help because of the older ones are mechanical, and they could be getting more out and slowing down. I mean, we have actually had a couple in the last few weeks that they lost water in the house, and we're like, well, we don't have water out here. And the meters actually have internally broke. Because they're just, they're 20, 25 years old, they're almost eight to 10, pushing close to 10 years out of their life expectancy.
They don't know what's happening.
And you're already replacing those with smart meters?
So in the last, since we actually received meters, anything that's been going in the ground, even if we change them out, have been smart meters. So there's probably close to 100, 150 already in the ground.
All right. Any additional, anything else for departmental? Any questions or additional questions for departmental report?
I just have one question for Mary. You mentioned in your report about continuing discussion regarding moving to town-owned devices. What's that all about?
It's a combination of things. It will actually net us some cost savings rather than $50 a month, because the devices are usually more than $45 a month. It will give us, and actually, I think the mayor could probably explain the more technical side of it better. But it will give us the ability when we experience service losses like we've had in big routes, key town personnel will not have that because the network that they're on is an emergency network.
It's a federal, it's a Maryland state contract that they're on, and actually, they're part of a federal contract through AT&amp;T's FirstNet. So that service provider does route, you get priority, I think, for like some of the ones with Verizon and things like that. But for critical services, FirstNet actually works really well. I've been piloting the network for a little while now. And when we have SOS on Verizon devices, mine is still full strength. So it should be pretty nice for us down here. We do have an AT&amp;T tower on top of the water tower on Franklin Avenue, right Jamie?
Yes, sir.
So that's helped, I think, substantially. But the pricing is government contract pricing. So as Mary said, there should be a decrease in price. Also, the, in the recent months, privacy questions have been a subject of concern. So it would make it so that folks, if they request information on the cell phone, once it's a town-owned device, that we can just turn that over and it's not infringing on anyone's privacy.
So council people will still be able to get their emails, messages on their existing phones?
The existing device would be able to handle Outlook, and we're trying to make sure it's compatible, compatible with all of the Microsoft 365 stuff we have. So that's the goal. So we're, we just got through the eligibility section, now we're just trying to work through. Hopefully, the first meeting in August, we'll have the contract up before the council for review.
So Mary, I just had, who will be, since we're on a little bit of timeline and some information will be coming in while you're out, who can we get, if that appraisal comes in, who will we talk to about?
I'll most likely have them copy both me and Dave Engelhardt on it.
Cool. Thank you.
But don't bother Mary during that time.
I don't want to.
Let's leave it. Go ahead.
I have a question for Dave. Just a rash at the Jolly Funeral Home on Franklin Avenue is, is getting out of hand.
Okay. So they're not doing any business, so they let it grow?
They do.
Okay.
I don't know what is making them stand.
Nobody's done it.
I just realized, actually, the town attorney has something that he needs to...
Go ahead.
Oh, yes. We had an outstanding open meetings compliance board complaint regarding our Heron Park RFP and our subcommittee meetings. That decision came out today, finding that we've committed no violations of the Open Meetings Act. And it can be found at 17 OMCB Opinions, page 98.
Should have left at 6:00.
Yes. We're about to start in here with open meetings and information.
Left at 6:00 AM, or 7:00 PM, whatever it was.
We're doing pretty good.
Thank you.
Do we have any more of those open? I know there was a rash.
We don't have any pending right now.
Not in the queue.
Has town staff working on any, fulfilling any requests for records, things like that right now?
They have been. They've been working pretty much every day, all the time.
There are a couple that are not closed. However, there has not been any movement. It's been a matter of waiting for some return feedback that we have not.
And just so I remember correctly, it's a certain amount of hours is, two hours is free because the rest is billed at a rate.
Unfortunately, though, the time it takes you to formulate the response doesn't really count towards that. It's the work you're doing once you have what they're looking for. So even finding what they're looking for sometimes is not, it's kind of complicated. You're supposed to be in the favor of the procurer. So definitely haven't been billed with a full amount of staff time, but you need to do the work beforehand in order to figure out how much it's going to cost someone. So we're not, not a head on it.
And then if department of two, it often bleeds into other departments. And it does take a whole lot of time. It grinds a lot of stuff to all. So, but...
It's, it's difficult, first of all. Larger communities have to be dedicated.
But our staff has done a great job. So Dave, great job handling the FOIA requests and the open meetings stuff. Kelsey, Kate, Mary, great job on the FOIA side. You all do a lot of heavy lifting. So, thank you. All right. Anything else?
Yes. Thank you to the electric company. And last week, we had an isolated power outage on Flower Street. When I say isolated, there were only three homes affected.
Were you one of them?
Anyway.
She did.
So my house, literally, my house, my next door neighbor and the house across the street where nobody, hush, where nobody lives. So my next door neighbor just thought it was everybody, and she didn't think anything. And nobody lived in the house across the street. So thank you, guys. When I came home and my house was like 85 degrees, thank you for coming out, trying to work it out, and then coming out again at 1:00 a.m. when it literally went out again. So I appreciate you guys. And I knew, I wasn't going to call you at the 1:00 a.m. because I knew that you had this to do in the morning, and I know what time you get up because we get around the same time. So I felt bad, like calling those guys out of bed to be there and then have to close roads and whatever else. But at least three gentlemen were outside. And me and my dogs were in the window the entire time, watching. So you were there for hours and that for a week. I appreciate you. And then came back today to follow up with the same crazy problem.
We actually, what it was, is the underground service that fed to the house where nobody lives at, that was causing the entire problem.
Wow. Mr. Bill's house.
Yeah. So by finding that today, we actually were able to narrow it down to what was causing the issue with the transformer. So...
So I appreciate that. And I will say this, because you know I get on my slip box, theoretically, and I'll be done in 30 seconds. It's always good to check on your neighbors. Really, it's good to check on your neighbors, really and truly. Because had I not called, you wouldn't have known. And I really thought, I'm not even lying, I thought I had paid my electric bill. And I called downstairs and was like, oh my God, what did I do? And that wasn't it. But then, if my next door neighbor hadn't done her due diligence and gone over and checked her uncle's vacant, because he's passed away, vacant house over the weekend, she wouldn't have known that his power was still out in that house, which was causing the fry to both of our houses. So folks, it pays to be a good neighbor. I don't mind you doing that, but no one wants him.
Next time, I'll call Jack.
I'll call him. He's not your electrician, though.
Jack's what kind of person.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, any comments from the public? Go ahead.
Real quick, Mary, that last day western for...
Thank you.
Back when the budget was going on, there was a line item put in for the IT and the audio in here. Can, did anything go with the status?
We've got an update that's coming for a meeting, those FOIA requests and PIA requests. That's what led to the delay. But we had a meeting with them, and hopefully we'll have an item up at least for discussion, probably in August.
Okay. Because these meetings being crowded and people start talking, it's hard to hear and you just, you can't.
Thank you for sharing.
But thank you.
That was the update for you.
It's, and it's no surprise, it's going to be a price for a system similar to a Worcester County system. It's pretty expensive, but we'll at least discuss it. So, but we at least this time have funding in the budget to be able, hopefully, not have to just say thank you, but no, thank you. We can discuss that. So, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
No? All right. Okay. So any comments from the council, sorry, Vice President?
I just have one thing. I have, I was unable to connect the Loris and Shaw Mayor's Association meeting because I was not feeling well. And in all the whole, that...
We all did. That's the town of Berlin.
Brought our dinner to the house, and I just wanted to pack it. And you would never know how much that meant to me, that you would take the time to do something like that. Your act of kindness is really appreciated.
Thank you. But it was all, it was the town. I just carried it over.
Well, thank you. Thank you for carrying it over.
You're welcome.
It was good, wasn't it?
It was good. I didn't feel like you. Thank you, Dee. Jay?
Nothing.
Shanika? Sorry, Councilmember Mary, Councilmember Nichols?
Just the title. I'm okay. I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Councilmember Wors?
Yeah, a couple things. I forgot, I forgot to ask this. On the, Mary, on the, on the registry credit card thing, there was a Grand Hotel Ocean City, Maryland, this whole week on April 17th. And I just didn't know that that was for, was there, was that a event or something?
It was for, what was the date?
The Grand Hotel, 417.
I was on...
Oh, I believe that was an animal police.
Okay. All right. I just didn't, because it broke off. It just hit out.
They break out into their separate...
And I don't, I can't remember because now it's getting late. But on the staff reports, did I, would it be possible to put a budget on there where it's coming from? Like, like the line on there or something like that?
Sure.
Financial, did I mention that? And then the other thing, the ARPA, the ARPA funds that are on the spending plan that you had provided before, thank you. I guess my question really is, these, this... I guess my question really is, these, this is part of a plan, so they're not really assigned. I mean, I mean, they're assigned, but they're not like officially assigned in one of our determinations, like unspendable, unassigned, committed. So they're in the plan.
Yeah, they're not in a reserve.
But they are, they are in reserve.
They're not in.
They are not in reserve. So things like, some of the things that I'm just looking ahead here, if it goes over, I'm kind of concerned, just putting this on the radar, about the stormwater. I'm wondering, should we put that into an account that's dedicated and?
I think right now, I think right now we are just on the plan as is, we're moving forward with stormwater projects.
As of right now, stormwater projects are not over assigned balances, we're receiving some grants. So whatever is on the budget, assigned from ARPA. ARPA is not part of the reserve. Reserves are generated for general fund elements, so again, we're talking about two different funds, stormwater and general fund. Your reserve assigned balances such as capital, utilization, et cetera, is in general fund only. ARPA grant is not part of it. ARPA grant is situated in a separate passion fund. Dedication to stormwater for capital projects on fiscal '24 remains. We have not suspended at all.
I just want to make sure.
And we have them for December of 2024, just so you know. So just as a mechanism for like your radar, the, if we don't have those funds pretty well assigned and like making good progress on them by the next fiscal year budget, then we need to start looking at reallocating.
Which we have all allocated and have assigned.
So I think, I think we're okay with this one.
All right, I just want to protect what we have envisioned as best we can. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray?
I just have a couple things. So Jamie, I saw you, I think, last Monday and you said you came in over the weekend for stormwater, I guess you probably should have asked us on department reports, but we've had some pretty heavy rains, I'd say, the last couple of months. How do you feel faring with drainage and, you know, sorts of issues?
When we came in Sunday, the worst place was on the end of Upsher and that is part of the design, the money that we received for design of the Upsher Westminster and Abbey, the stormwater management on there. So hopefully, like Darrell said when he brought that meeting, most time if they give you money for permitting and design, they're usually going to give you the money to construct. So we had about two point, about two and a half inches versus at my house, I had almost eight. And I'm only 12 miles from here, so we did fairly well. So, and the spray sites had, one had five inches, other one had three inches. So we did fairly well here, but there was just a little bit on Nelson and Main Avenue didn't have anything. So we were, I felt we were very lucky. Because we actually called, I called a couple hundred guys in because if it was raining at my house, the way it was raining here, we'd be here for a while. So other than that, just the end of Upsher, that's the only spot that I've really seen that the guys that actually told me that was the worst spot.
I talked to some officers that were on for both of those bigger events, I think it was through three of them. And they said that there was a little bit of standing water sometimes on the sides, but when they surveyed everything, just like Jamie said, it was still passable.
Yeah, Nelson Street's always been a little bit past and it's pretty amazing the differences in that still.
Nelson did have some standing water on one of them, but it was passable.
You said you, you didn't find anything on Main Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
That's not one we shared with me.
Chris Cord went down there, he was the first, that's the first rate he went and he called me and said there was no water. So I'm just relaying what I was told, sir.
Is there any else?
I also want to, I just noticed with the electric department, you guys were out and some heat in last week. It's very much appreciated, those of us who work inside, really grateful for that. So thanks for all your work that you did over the last week.
And we got some heat shaving coming up.
Yeah, so that's probably going to happen this week.
I felt so bad, I went outside my window and they'd like me occasionally, I'd be like, sorry. I did bring the gatorade popsicle.
She did, she brought the popsicles.
What'd you say, Kevin?
I can't, yeah, I was like, oh, I'm sorry. I felt really bad.
Comments from the mayor, I do have, I sent everybody, everybody has a copy of a draft letter for the Worcester County Commissioners regarding the Tattoo Advisory Committee. We met last month, we've been working through a letter to send to update what we had previously sent to the county several years ago. So I'm just going to read it. It's the President Bertino writing on behalf of the Town of Berlin Tattoo Advisory Committee to request a meeting with you as President of the Worcester County Commissioners and the Board of Health. For those of you that don't know, the Worcester County Commissioners are the Board of Health and the Worcester County Health Officer Becky Jones to discuss the committee's research and draft regulations that would only impact the municipal limits of the Town of Berlin. Over the past several years, the Town of Berlin has taken meaningful steps through the Tattoo Advisory Committee to create a safe and equitable path forward for tattoo establishments within town limits. The committee has been comprised of town council members, but President Burrell and I both serve on that committee, business owners and residents. It is also led by Chairman Matthew Amy, a Berlin resident and internationally renowned, award-winning tattoo artist. Through many meetings and a great deal of research and discussion, the committee has developed a comprehensive set of regulations and specific zoning requirements for tattoo establishments. During the meeting, we would like to discuss the potential for the Worcester County Health Department to provide proactive health and safety inspections similar to the inspections already completed by the Worcester County Health Department for body piercing studios. The committee modeled their health and safety inspections based on the current standards within the state of Delaware, since no guidelines currently exist within the state of Maryland. The mayor's office welcomes the opportunity to coordinate a meeting between you, the Health Officer and the Tattoo Advisory Committee and many other parties to advance the opportunity, this opportunity for local businesses within the Town of Berlin respectively. So we would like to try and send that over to President Bertino tomorrow if we have the approval of the council. So the motion by Vice President Burrell, a second by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor, say hi. I follow those. Let the record reflect that unanimously, thank you. The only other thing I have to say is vegetation management. I know that Jimmy, you sent out a pretty comprehensive list, thank you for that. I know that Mother Nature sent a friend to us, trying to get the weeds to grow up between the sidewalks, starting to make it look a little wild, but you all are on it, so thank you. Also, Christmas and, happy Christmas Eve in July, tomorrow's Christmas in July, we will be posting towns, Christmas great being, thank you, tomorrow, just so you'll be in. So stand by for that. Morning.
I mean, come on, it's 10 o'clock, come on, say that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 10 will post it at 4 a.m. for me. So yes, tomorrow that will be unleashed as well as a couple cool activities that we have planned for the holiday season. So thank you to Sarah and Ivy and Allison for their help with that. All right, that's all I have. We have, I think I have an ask about the press. Comments from the press? None? Vice President?
Second.
All in favor? Third? Thank you.
Here, I gave you each one, you can just drink.
Share. Me and I'll sign for you.